Everybody ready?
[crosstalk]
Welcome, everyone, to the April 11th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone at home and here, and welcome back, council. Hope everybody had a good break. Items and committee reports come up first, and I'm just going to run through a few things that aren't committee reports that I wanted to mention to you. This weekend, we celebrated Arbor Day, and I thought it was really significant because it was a town and gown event where we had 60 students going out and helping plant trees in three parks and work in the university area park. We had neighbors and staff and the Tree Foundation and Alpha, Beta, Psi came and helped. And this celebrates 32 years that we've been a Tree City, USA. That's a long time commitment on the part of our community. I testified on rail last week. I went to the Oregon Department of Transportation Flexible Funding Committee last week. We had one super event during break that many of you were at, the groundbreaking for the Bennett Building, which is another good step forward in our downtown. And then George Polley and I had a chance to go to the opening of Camus Country, which is a mill, a former grass seed farm that's now raising red berry, winter red berry wheat and tef and grinding it and selling it. And so it's part of our, it actually fits really well in with our food security issues. We had a delegation from our sister city in Japan come, a student delegation from Kakagawa. And let's see, the only other thing, I think you got a message about that today, is that on Thursday, we have kind of a special event happening here at City Hall. Edgar Pure, I don't know how many of you know him, is receiving the French Legion of Honor. And so the French Council is going to come here to award him that, and they are awarding that to him as the highest honor of the French government. It's going to be in City Hall at 2:00 on Thursday, if you have time to come. It's a one-of-a-kind event. The French government sees him as symbolic of the valor of all American troops in France during World War II. And he was an officer on the lead amphibious crew that was recognized with thoroughness and effectiveness at the onset of several invasions going into hazardous waters in most European and Pacific invasions preparing the way for invading forces. He received a lot of other awards, and this is kind of a special, special thing. And we know him most often here because he's with Veterans for Peace. So it's really a...
And he still wears his uniform.
He still fits into his uniform.
Yes.
Not alone, I got him.
Yeah, I know. No, it's really, this is a remarkable, remarkable event.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to head into, if you have some other comments as you talk about your committees, that's fine, too. Let's start out with the Human Rights Commission. That's Pat.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to once again thank the mayor for appointing me to the Human Rights Commission. When I was elected, prior to beginning my service, I asked Kitty if she would appoint me to the Human Rights Commission, and she did so. So I'm very happy to be serving there. The Human Rights Commission is going through some times of pretty serious and significant change in the way they address their charge and in rewriting the charge. The City Council on May 18th has a meeting with the Human Rights Commission. It's a 60-minute session that's scheduled. You'll receive lots of information in preparation for that, but it's the annual meeting with the HRC. Looking forward to that. I'll cover very briefly a few things that have happened, but just before that, I had a chance with Councillor Brown to attend the Kakagawa farewell, and it was a wonderful event. And on an impromptu basis, all the students had this really crazy folk dance that they did and invited us all to go up there and dance. And it'll be a testimonial to the...
Did they get pictures?
To either the mental intelligence of city councillors or the bravery of city councillors, in that I did dance and Councillor Brown did not dance.
Well, I did.
Oh, you did.
In fact, well, we're going to give a demonstration in between.
[laughter]
That's right.
Don't wait for a break. Do it now.
Good thing it was a really interesting and unique dance. The bad thing is it went on for approximately an hour and 15 minutes.
You guys didn't have that long.
Felt that long. The Human Rights Commission, over the last year, has done a number of different things. They've gone through some, through human rights framework training, and they've had a series of meetings, a series of training sessions, both with the commission and with city staff. And rather than go through my list of things that the Human Rights Commission has done, I'd like to point out that the city manager today sent everybody a letter via email, and it really covers everything that is the past, present, and future of the Human Rights Commission. I've not had a chance to speak about it yet, but one thing that the manager has suggested is a series of listening sessions between the Human Rights Commission and staff and the HRC and city councillors to further define the role of the HRC. Significant to me is the prominence of the triple bottom line and the HRC's potential line, potential role in fulfilling the most, what is probably the most elusive part of the triple bottom line, which is the social equity portion of the triple bottom line. And they take it very seriously, the HRC. Things are in definition right now, and the city council, of course, is the key in redefining the way the Human Rights Commission addresses the future. That will begin, or an integral part of the process, will be on May 18th. The two other things, one is that we have six openings or six positions being vacated on the HRC. Three of them are, people have applied for reappointment, and that's normally kind of a cut-and-dried thing, is that the reappointment will happen. Doesn't always, but it's cut and dried. But significantly also, there are three openings that are going to be vacant on the HRC. So each councillor should probably look in the district and look at the composition of the HRC and see what in each of our minds needs to be addressed and make sure that as we move into this new future of the HRC that we're able to address things on a broad spectrum. Additionally, the last thing is that the HRC, as you all know most likely, has, each of the commissioners has a council person as a principal liaison. And I asked for each councillor's HRC liaison to be placed on a card with our name, and not for daily contact, but occasionally you may expect to hear from your HRC counterpart. And I put them in order, so I'll pass them in that direction. If you'll give me the bottom one, actually. That one's for you, George. They'll contact you if important or if hot issues are coming up, and additionally, use them as a resource, please, for HR, human rights issues, as they come forward in your ward in the city or however it may come.
I've got somebody named Patch Far.
We happen to have the same liaisons.
I got my same one. That's great.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mine's changed.
All right. Next is Traveling County.
Before I get to the one main important thing that we covered at last month's meeting, just a little follow-up, if I may, Madam Mayor, on the Camus Country Mill ribbon-cutting ceremony. It's a second and third generation farmers are now working this, and they're using, what they used to do is they'd grow the grains and ship it to Myrtle Creek or Myrtle Point for milling and then bring it back and sell it. But with working through Lane County, they got some grant money and they bought some new equipment, so they're able to do it right on-site at their facility on Link Road. During the presentation, one of the things that was said that kind of stuck with me was that the biggest hurdle they had in the entire process was the permitting process through the city of Eugene. They, the farmers recommended that if there was an omsbuddmen, business omsbuddmen somewhere in the city that could guide these new and starting small business, local businesses through the permitting process, it would be a lot better and easier for them to get on their way. I remember at one time, the city council voted to have such position created. It's probably gone by the wayside with budget cuts over the years, but I don't think it ever actually was, anybody was ever actually appointed to that position. But, you know, that's something we might think about, since there is an emphasis now on local businesses, that perhaps maybe we should take a look at that or have somebody designated over at the planning department to walk these small, starting businesses through the process. You know, some of the bigger companies, they have people that know how to do this, but these folks, they're local, they were local farmers, and, you know, this is kind of a whole new world to them. And they said that was their, the biggest hang-up they had was going through the city process.
Yeah, they linked up with Hummingbirds, so...
The Hummingbird, yes. And Charlie Tilt?
Mm-hmm, and Julie.
Yeah, they were there. And actually, Charlie said something pretty amazing about this whole process, about growing locally and buying locally. He says, "It makes a big difference when you can look the farmer in the eye that you're eating his, the food that he raised as opposed to buying something, you know, from across country." So that was the two main things that I took away from that besides the bag of flour that they ground. So that's kind of good. Okay, so Traveling County, the major thing that we covered at our last board meeting was requests for political or community action. Now, Traveling County is an organization that's based, funded with public and private funds, so this is a nonpartisan-type process that they're going to go through, and it's not to endorse any specific candidate. It's if a request comes from somebody that, on an issue, whether it be a state, local, or federal issue that affects the tourism industry, we've started a process that can be followed through our board for requests for endorsing any of these type of actions. It does take, in order to receive an endorsement, any proposed position must receive a supermajority, approval of two-thirds of the votes of the board members present. So it's something that's not taken very lightly. We do have an issues committee that vets these things out before it goes to the executive committee, and then it goes to the full board. And again, it's primarily things that are tourism-related that may affect Traveling County or the tourism industry specifically. And in fact, they've come up with a referral form for the people that are proposing the, or asking Lane County to take a position. And it's what is the issue, what are the arguments? And this is, I kind of liked this. This is what are the arguments on both or all sides of the issue? So they're kind of opening up to hear the entire story. So if there's a tourism-related issue that comes before somebody that you think you might want Traveling County to either get behind or camp, not campaign, but lobby against, there is a form now that you have to fill out and submit to the board. So it's something, something new that we haven't done in the, well, except for one year, I've been on the Traveling County Board since, you know, starting on the council in 2003. And this is the first time we've actually formally come up with a format to follow. So it's kind of a new venture for us.
Before we move on to something else, I wanted to ask you a question, George, about that, because I talked to staff, but I just want to be a bug in your ear, too, is we have this truffle festival that happens, not chocolate truffle, but fungi truffle. And it has a lot of potential, and they're kind of spreading their wings and thinking about moving it somewhere else because they're not sure they have enough capacity here. And so I would like us to have enough capacity here. I would like us to keep it here if we can. And so I think it's an important piece of our local economy. I understand, I think they're looking at maybe going up by Newburgh or somewhere in that area, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I think it has a lot of economic potential for our area, and if there's something we should be doing with our partners to try to ensure that they stay in the area, I think it would be great.
Definitely, and I will make sure I get the word back to Carrie Westlin, the CEO, and see if she can assign somebody to follow up on that and try to keep the truffles local.
Thank you. We have a lot, actually, they have a lot of international visitors. Human Services Commission, Andrea.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I actually missed the last Human Services Commission because I had picked up a day and they'd moved the day of the meeting, but I have talked to Steve Manila, and he did fill me in on some of the projects they're working on. They're really, the concern is about the money that we are repurposing through our budget process for Kahoots, the second Kahoots thing. He was actually kind of very concerned about what that means to the agencies that we provide services to at the commission level. Talking about a community benefit, can you help me with that last word? It's not a tax. Are they talking about putting levy on, Mayor? Is that what they're doing, a community benefit levy? Fee. And that's going to be presented this, later this month. And just overall concerns about how they have, they're not able, there's not enough money to fund all the agencies they have in funding. And there was quite a, as you saw in the paper, there was quite a controversy about Central Latino Americano not getting their funding and the concerns around that. So, you know, there's a lot of concern, lack of money is the bottom line, and what they're not able to continue to do once, what they thought at a time when really their needs are going up. So that pretty much is, in a nutshell, can you think of anything else? You at the last...
The only thing I can say about that, since I serve on it, too, is that once they know where all the budgets land, then they'll know how much is really there and all the different social services are looking at that and trying to figure out where they are. And then we may have some kind of summit of some kind about how we're going to try to put the services together the best we can in our, in our community. People are, very knowledgeable, people are working hard at it. It's a very difficult thing to not be able to provide the things that you would, you have been able to provide and to be facing large cuts in funding for those things, and that's affecting a lot of, a lot of agencies, so...
Well, and with that, the Public Safety Coordinating Committee, which is also the other commitment that I have, pretty much has the same message with them. You know, they are talking about, you know, what it's going to mean to them to not have some of the contracts that they had, how different organizations are realigning their mission to really serving the population that they started out to instead of branch, you know, like the one that was brought up was Lane County Mental Health, how they are not actually going to be able to provide services for the people coming out of, coming into sponsors, the reentry program with the mental health aspect, because it doesn't align with their mission. And just how people are refocusing to really just kind of be streamlined and lean in, you know, trying to continue their mission, but how that has a ripple effect to all the different agencies. And their other presentation and conversation at the PSCC was, I was talking about not only budget issues, but around issues of disproportionate minority contact. Again, that seems to be a subject that they talk about every meeting that they have and the work that they're doing on that.
There's a meeting at Oregon Research Institute coming up soon on that issue.
Yeah.
Can you explain what that is, Andrea?
Disproportionate Minority Contact?
Yeah.
So what it, what that is, is a term that they use for over-representation of people of color in the judicial system, according to the percentage of people that are in the community. For instance, Latinos are 12% of the overall population, but yet they represent in the, like, Serb Center, there's like 30%. And African-Americans are less than five, and how they're, you know, like, it should be reflective of the same amount it's in population. And so when there's the over-representation according to the population in the community, that is considered disproportionate minority contact.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yes.
Andrea, can you be a little bit more specific about the magnitude of the HSC cuts? Is it like $2 million of a billion?
You know, I'm not really sure the numbers because we haven't seen the budgets yet, but I think John is repurposing in our budget process to, not that we're not going to be putting money into social services, it's just how, where we are aligning our goals within the city, where we want the money to go versus handing it to the HSC. And we're, but we're not the only ones. And so I think that, I think that they, there was an article in the paper saying that, you know, that they had, I'm just trying to think of the numbers, I don't want to misquote it, but they're like, doing like a third less, if not more.
Like 64 programs down to 45, like $2 million less or something like that.
They've done like 26 programs or something like that.
Yeah. It was pretty dramatic.
It's very dramatic.
Yeah. Well, thanks for doing that.
So can I talk about the other, my other, so El Rapa, we had our first budget meeting, and I had talked to you about how we did listening circles with the, with the other folks on the El Rapa Board, and then a handful of us spent a day with the employees. And at the Budget Committee, it was interesting because I kind of felt almost like, like we hadn't done that. Because it was, there was a lot of conversation about what some of the budget decisions we had made last year and trying to rectify them with staff. And there was a huge message from the majority of the Budget Committee that we're not going to rectify the problem that we, because we basically pared down our contribution to retirement, and the staff were feeling that that was unfair and unjust, that the money was there. And so the Budget Committee chose not to bring that back up and didn't give us a recommendation to the board that we should go ahead and refund that. And so that was, that was quite interesting. They're pretty much wholly known, and they're really counting on us and on the other organizations to, to make sure that we can at least give what we gave last year. It'll be the third year that they have not, they have not gotten an increase in their contributions from the, from the agencies, you know, from the, from the city, from the cities and from the county. I think everybody felt pretty good, mostly about the report that they did. They had a pretty good air quality report, so that, so that felt like it was, you know, really good. And I think there was some really good feelings about the work that they're doing. People feel really happy about it, so that was a plus. I attended the Santa Clara River Road Community Organizations Joint Meeting. They were presenting their SNAP project, and it looks like it's a go. They're going to be doing some surveys, they're going to be working with Julie Fisher and Cognito Group. They were there, and it was, it was pretty well-attended. Commissioner Handy and Bosa Vich were there, and so it was kind of good to see other people there and a lot of old faces and new faces for that organization, so that was, that was pretty good to see. I also was present, present at an EMX outreach they did to the Latino community at Plaza Latina. It wasn't as well-attended as we had hoped, but it was a good time. There was a lot of people there that were eating lunch and stuff and just kind of came over and checked out stuff and had some good conversations with a handful of business owners that are right there in that area. So that was good. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that I wanted to say good luck and goodbye to Ron Chase. He's retiring from sponsors. He was quite a driving force. He had a retirement party this week. And good luck to Paul Solomon. I'm sure he'll do a good job. And the other thing I'd like to mention, that this weekend, the Cascade Medical Team is doing an event at 1162 Willamette. It's going to be primary care visits for people who do not have access to insurance or to medical care. It'll be from 9 to 5, first come, first served. There'll be a smidgen of dental care, and so folks are in need of that, feel free to come by and participate. Oh, and Trainsong actually had their neighborhood meeting, too, and they have, did their voting and stuff, and so they are, they have another, another group of people in leadership.
Great, thank you. So Alan, you want to, oh, no, it's Lane Council, it's Chris, Lane Council Government first.
Yes, thank you. As I did before, to actually save a little time, I have took my cheat sheet and printed it out. So the main stuff is on here. So what I'll do is just kind of give you a brief overview of what's happening right, the main thing. And that is probably that, as I mentioned before, ElCog is working to try to figure out how to be more effective as a organization that represents so many different jurisdictions, cities, library districts, port districts, the county. And so one of the things they've been working on is how could they be more proactive, and they identified three areas, one of which is how they could be involved in economic development. And that, one of the ways in which they're doing that is getting on the Lane Economic Council and being involved in that. A second area is around the notion of improved communication, and that actually involves a whole variety of things, one of which is to do a audit of their current systems of how they communicate, not only within the organization, but how they communicate after their members. Some of the challenges they've had in the past have been, they haven't communicated as well or as fully or in an effective way with some of the member agencies, and how we can do that in a much more effective way. And then, and part of that also includes what they're calling the regional voice, which is taking kind of the united front concept and not really doing it to the degree that united front does it, but to really say, what if ElCog, since it represents 28 jurisdictions, what if it goes to Salem and says, "The 28 jurisdictions within Lane County like these kinds of ideas, and we want to proceed very cautiously, because when you have 28 jurisdictions, 28 jurisdictions have to agree on what you're going to go to Salem to talk about." And so they're really kind of moving along in a very slow and deliberate way. And at this point, mostly what they're talking about is kind of the standard stuff of home rule and resistance to unfunded mandates, but as they get specific proposals, they'll be bringing them to the jurisdictions and say, "Are you interested in this?" And one of the rules has been, we're not going to take it if like half the group likes it and the other half of the group doesn't like it. That's really pointless. I mean, you want to take something where you have pretty much universal agreement, so that's why movement is very slow on that. But one of the other elements of that is, in terms of regional voices, to being a clearinghouse for information. Oftentimes, folks in Salem need information. They need to know how things work. And being able to provide a resource can be very valuable. In other words, if you want to know a trusted place you can go to get information, and ElCog certainly is the repository for a huge amount of information that could be very beneficial in making that available. And then the third area is around human services support. And because senior disabled services represents over half of the ElCog budget, human services is obviously a very important element of what ElCog does. And they're waiting to hear what's going to happen with funding, because I was on the ElCog Board back in 2004, when they went from their entire operation down to like two people. And it's not just cutting senior disabled services down to two people, it's removing all of those services for the seniors in Lane County. And that means people who are at home and need home health care, people who need senior services, medications, you know, there's just a whole host of services that suddenly don't get anymore. And this is a very vulnerable population, and so they're waiting to see if that same thing is going to duplicate all over again. So those are the main things that are going on. It's really kind of an interesting time. As we become more active, as things become more active, it will be important for us to communicate back to our member organizations, so we don't just go off and process and appoint people to groups and talk about transportation and then go home. There may be more opportunities for interface between jurisdictions and ElCog as we begin to get more of a proactive stance. I think that's actually an opportunity that we can really take advantage of. So we may expect to have more communication about what's happening at ElCog and how ElCog would like for the jurisdictions to give guidance and support for things that can be, can go out. Those are the main things. The only things I would mention from the standpoint of just updates, the mayor already mentioned the Kakagawa students, and we greeted them the day they came, and it was very nice because some of the folks that I had met when I was in Japan were over here, and it was nice to see them again. The students, I'm so impressed with how bright and smart the students are. They really are a very impressive group of people.
I think it was a really hard time for them because they were here right after the...
Right after the earthquake.
Yeah, and, and they had been encouraged by the adults in their lives to keep, to come anyway and to go on and have this experience and be able to move on, but it was very, you could, it was very hard for them.
You could tell it was on their thoughts. And while Kakagawa is a little further away than Tokyo, so it's maybe a little less of an acute, immediate need, the entire country feels the impact of that event, and so I think it is on everybody's mind.
It did say they, it made them happy to know that we cared.
Yes.
And I think that's, it was an important part of that.
I think it was, and I think they were very sincere in their, in their appreciation for the fact that we turned out and whether we danced or whether we were there for a meeting. I think they liked that. Andrea mentioned the healthcare event, which, they did one almost a year ago up in Junction City, and it was a very successful event, and this one could prove to be even bigger and more successful. It really is a great opportunity for folks to get healthcare, which reminded me of Project Homeless Connect, which was also a tremendous event. Some of us were there. The mayor shakes hands every year, and I'm just amazed at how many hands the mayor shakes
Five hours of shaking.
Of shaking hands of people that come in. They apparently, from what I understand, broke all the records this year, not only in terms of people going through, but also in terms of volunteers, which is a very gratifying thing, to have so many people volunteering for that event. And it really is a tremendous opportunity to provide support and services for folks who, in many cases, this is it for them. This is the only kind of opportunity they're going to have. And when you talk with Richie and you learn how many people are situationally homeless that, through that kind of conditional thing we talk about, this is the way these people can really get some help. And so it was, it was a nice event from that standpoint. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. So Alan, you're up with, you have MPC and Sustainability Commission.
Yeah, I was wondering if I could defer all of my time to Councillor Brown in far as dancing side.[1798.86][1798.86][laughter]
We forgot our key.
Forgot the music.
Mike, don't you have some music somewhere on your computer?
Yeah, we can bring up some. How much you bar and we can figure it out. Sustainability Commission than MPC. Sustainability Commission, the next Sustainability Commission is actually next week on April 20th. They meet every third Wednesday of the month here at McNutt. The chair right now is Josh Scov, he's doing a very good job. They've been really focused in on two pretty big issues. If you recall, the last time we did these round of things, we, the Sustainability Commission wanted to, and requested that the council asked them to comment on the envision Eugene pillars and so they've been busily working through those and developing comments and developing those to bring those recommendations and comments back to the, to the council, as well as the triple bottom line tool and the analysis for the envision Eugene. So that's taken up a lot of time, as well as what's called CLUTAC, which is a joint subcommittee of plan commissioners and sustainability commissioners to work on transportation and land use issues. And they've been obviously working on MX for a while, so the, as has the full Sustainability Commission. There are, we're planning a retreat coming up in the next month or two to focus on work plan items. And then I think there's going to be four new members up in our selection here, two of which are folks that are currently on the Sustainability Commission that are not, have decided they have too much commitment. And so there'll be several new faces on the Sustainability Commission with the next out of the 13 that are on.
I'm sorry, could I jump in there? We're still doing that, as I understand it, that there's one member of the commission per counselor that's appointed as an appointed position, is that correct?
Counselor gets one and then there's-
The at-large positions. One of the openings that is coming up is one that's the Ward Five position, do I have that correct?
Correct, it is.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to double check that, I've been working on that.
It's currently served by an EWE person.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, and the other one is Pat, you've got one.
Yep.
I've been talking with some folks on that, so.
Josh is, not Josh Scov.
Not Josh, Bruce. Any other questions about sustainability? MPC, MPC's been busy with MX as well. They just had a public hearing at the Wheeler Pavilion on April 5th and also our meeting is this Thursday at 11:30 to 1:30 where we're essentially going to take a vote about the final leg of the three that need to take votes on MX. So that's been occupying quite a bit of time for MPC, as you can well imagine, since they're one of the bodies that actually has to move the preferred alternative forward. The, also new members on that group with the change in the county commissioners, we have two new, one's kind of not new. Jay Bosevich is on there, he's new to the commission and then Sid Lichen-
Sid Lichen.
Sid Lichen is the other commissioner from, from the county. So Christine Lundberg took his spot and along with Hillary Wiley from Springfield, who's now the current chair of the MPC. We have a very active citizen involvement committee, which is pretty soon coming up with some openings on it, so if anybody has any thoughts about, or encouragement of people to get involved in that, that's a really good committee. We've expanded their work and they've done a very good job. They, they comment on, on the policies that we take up, as well as the outreach and as well as a lot of the different programs that MPC runs. Of course, there's the, we did the naming of the I-5 Bridge, Willamette Passage, I think every jurisdiction unanimously supported that name and I don't know that that's official yet, but I think it's going to be. And then, of course, the transportation planning cycle has started. Every four years, the federally required RTP, Regional Transportation Plan, as well as the local transportation plans, in our case, TransPlan, are all now getting going. And so Springfield, Coburg, Eugene and LTD all are doing, Enlaine County are all doing their local plans. And so all the things that flow into that are the bike and pedestrian plan that's going on right now and all the different aspects of it that are going into that trans, going into the TransPlan and then all the TransPlans kind of grouped together to become the, the regional transportation plan. So that's, process is going to take, I think, the next year and a half to two years to work through all of the, all of the different pieces, parts. And the, the, on, on the greenhouse gas front, the transportation, or the, the Targeted Rule Advisory Committee, which I served on along with Andrea Reiner and Tom Schwetzen, LTD, was a result of the work that we did on Senate Bill 1059 and, which is about, and Senate Bill 2001, which requires the Central Lane MPO to do scenario planning to reduce our greenhouse gases in that intersection of transportation and land use. We're required to do the scenario planning, we're not required to actually adopt one and implement one, but we have to do the planning. The only metro area that actually is required to do the planning and, and adopt them and implement them is metro and the Portland area. But the next bill that came out of the pipe was that there was scenario planning for all of the metro areas, but they needed a target to, and to, to deal, to strive for. So the Senate Bill 1059 set up several things. It set up a toolkit for all these metro areas to use in order to meet their targets over the 2020, 2035 timeframe, as well as a public education outreach program and then also a statewide transportation strategy, so everybody knows how, what this fits into it. And then finally, there was the MPOs that actually had to do, set a target, or meet a target. And this transportation, or Targeted Rulemaking Advisory Committee for LCDC was actually finished its work last two weeks ago and we forwarded a target for each of the MPOs, including our own, about what we need to do in the, in the near term and in the long term to meet those targets for greenhouse gas reductions from transportation land use. The last two issues, I think the mayor can cover, which is OMPAC and Shezda Cherevich and also rail. Those are all under MPC as well.
The OMPAC's going to be meeting again in May, so it'll be a while before I have anything new to say about that. In terms of rail, we're, we're still, the interviews are done for the membership to the committee on the rail alignment, so that's getting ready to, hopefully soon to, to roll out. It's ever so slow because every time, there's another little twist in the road, which is now-
Track.
Yeah, the track, which is now, Lynn Peterson has been appointed to be the governor's advisor on rail, so she has a whole lot of ideas of her own that are now coming into play. So just watching all the pieces come together.
One unrelated comment is that the Riverstone Clinic, which is-
Springfield.
Is having its groundbreaking on April 22nd, 10 to noon in Springfield. That's a long, that's a great event and a really great asset for the community-
It's going to be a nice place.
For healthcare for lower income folk.
Well, they take insurance too.
And they take, yeah, it's a full-fledged clinic.
Yeah.
So it does everything.
Good point.
They do.
Thank you. Betty, you want to talk about Lane Workforce Partnership?
Sure, I want to go on a train ride first.
They all like to do that.
Yeah, well, I don't care how expedite it is. I had the, before I get to workforce, I had the privilege of welcoming the Regional Meeting of Zonta and Kitty, Kitty had another obligation that day. And I learned something about them. They, it's a group that does a lot of good things for, especially for women and girls. And they've been focusing on trafficking, which is something I didn't know, along with a lot of people, I guess I didn't realize it was a real problem in our area, but it is. It isn't just some other country. And that's something I, I think everybody should try to do something about, but I don't know. I, I bought a book from them, Renting Lacy, which is a really horrifying book, but it's, I would suggest reading it to learn something. I was also at the farewell party, or the retirement party, not farewell, for, for Ron Chase and it was a great occasion and I think he's done so much for the community. And now he's going to have some fun because the day after the party, he was scheduled to pick up an eight-week-old puppy.
Look, good thing he retired.
Well, he's, he and I are going to get our dogs together sometime in the future when she, when his gets old enough to-
Not be eaten.
Yes. Workforce Partnership, I, I'm very happy to be on that. I have learned a lot about it, even though the, the National Committee I'm on has been pressing for reauthorization of the Workforce Act, so which still hasn't happened. It is one of the big things that National League of Cities is working for right now. Incidentally, that's where I was when you folks decided to leave City Hall, but, and National League of Cities, but the mission of the Workforce Partnership is to meet the workforce needs of employers and individuals through partnerships and innovation. And the partnership part is, is really important. If you don't know about this, and I didn't until I got on the board, I'm now on the board and on the executive committee, along with the spouses of two councilmembers. So I see your, your spouses often.
Probably more than we do.
Maybe. I probably see you more than they do. The, if, for, to see an example of the collaboration, if you haven't been there, it would be worth a visit to the Workforce Lane Office at 2510 Oakmont Way, where they're collaborating with LCC, the State Employment Office, the Job Corps, Lane Independent Living Alliance. And you just walk in there and everybody is ready to help you. It is absolutely wonderful. I walked in and they were ready to help me write a resume or do anything I wanted. They will help you improve your math skills, your English skills, you can use the computers to look for jobs and it's, it's a really great place and they seem to be very welcoming and very eager to help. So I think it's a good organization. They do think, instead of just talking about jobs in general, they try to focus on jobs that are likely to be, likely to be occurring in the area and needs that are likely. An example of that is a community healthcare, let's see, what is this called? Let me, the partnership established a coalition of healthcare stakeholders, which is known as the Community Healthcare Education Network. And it's made up of healthcare organizations, education and workforce development professionals. And they're, they're trying to play, to help train people for healthcare jobs that probably will be increasing, regardless of whether the new hospital comes, there's a great need for healthcare professionals. And they do a lot of internships when they have the money, everybody short of money, I guess, but youth internships and training and retraining, helping people to train and retrain for the jobs that are likely to be available. And I think if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, but it's a very good organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
They're in our current, our new police station building, are they?
No, they're not there anymore.
They've moved.
They got evicted. They now have, they now have new offices out next to Marie Callender's in a building and they're very happy with their new place.
It's a nice place.
It is.
Be manager.
They weren't evicted, they actually, we provided an opportunity for them to-
Well, I like the way you put that.
And they're happy with that, thank you.
Well, I was hoping they'd come downtown, but they said they couldn't find a suitable place downtown.
That's because it's too popular downtown.
Yeah, that would have been. The only thing I admire is just on April 27th, I'll be giving my budget presentation to the Budget Committee, so we're into that season and we'll kind of work through that as we have the last couple of years and looking forward to some really good discussion with the committee itself.
The only thing that I wanted to say before we move to the next item today is, because it was in one of our news publications, is that in the meeting where we did discuss City Hall, I just wanted to clarify that there was no decision to raise the building, that in fact, what we talked about was looking at options and we're going to stay on this piece of property. So I just wanted to make that clear.
I have one other item, I forgot. If people get a chance to take a look at the chambers this month, open for Business Magazine, it's all about arts and business. There's a lot in there around, one, Eugenia Gogo, which is the new website for sort of opening a window for all things arts, culture and entertainment in the community and there's been some great work done on that. The Arts and Business Alliance for Eugene also was highlighted in there and of course the city was an important part in sort of bringing that to fruition and so it's actually a really great issue. Renee Grubie is on the front cover of that and so I would encourage people to take a look at that.
Good.
We should mention that Kitty and I were both at the opening of the new jazz station and Kitty actually cut the ribbon.
Yes.
Did you dance?
Say, cut the rug, I guess, cut the ribbon.
Cut the ribbon.
The ribbon, I didn't see anyone dancing while we were there.
I'm just asking.
But it was, it was first Friday and the town was full of people.
It was, it was very-
All right, ready to move on, everybody?
Mayor, it's Counselor Clark's spoken.
I haven't, but I think we had just specialized-
No, you have, you certainly can, if you want to-
I guess I could report that I had, with the mayor being busy with another event, I had the chance to go with Sergeant Fitzpatrick to Salem here several weeks ago and lobby on the city's behalf to Senate Subcommittee on, on a bill, on Senate Bill 764 to create an alcohol impact area, which is try to help replicate a lot of the success we had downtown this last summer and some other parts of town. I've had a chance to work with, with George Polling for some time here now on splitting up the Calhoun Neighborhood Association or the beginnings of what that would look like with a lot of the neighbors that we've been working on for so long. Unfortunately, I missed the event that Andrea mentioned with the Santa Clara and River Road meetings together with a business conflict that night, but have been working with them for some time on some ideas that are around the SNAP that they're working on. Had a chance to attend the Regional Prosperity Initiative that the chamber hosted on, on April 1st. I think I saw Chris there as well and had a chance to attend the school board meeting, the 4J School Board meeting on the evening of the 30th, where Counselor Brown was speaking with them about Civic Stadium and get a chance to listen to the discussion. Had the chance to attend the groundbreaking for the Bennett Project and what was the other thing that's coming up here? There is a, it's not really a, a city sort of thing, but a town hall meeting that's coming up this weekend. At, at 10:00 AM, there is a, a state legislative redistricting hearing being held and that's at, at 10:00 AM at the Knight Library over at the U of O, for anybody who would like to attend that and be heard on how the state legislative redistricting is done. Lastly, I attended a, another town hall meeting held by Senator Edwards and Representatives Hoyle and Nathanson in the Santa Clara area as well, here a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the City Manager Evaluation Follow-Up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Alana Holmes with Human Resources. This work session is a follow-up to our September discussion about a new performance rating system and a standard formula for compensation for the city manager. At this time, I'm going to hand the topic over to Denise Smith, our Performance and Development Manager, who will walk you through the pertinent parts of the AIS and the attachments. I did want to just make one comment. You just received an amended attachment C, so if you will discard or cross through the one that's in your packet, the one that was just handed out is the one for purposes of our discussion tonight. Thank you very much, Denise.
Does this take the place of Exhibit One then?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything different?
Attachment C. Attachment C.
Yes, First Amendment to the employment contract, so it was the second page. What we had done is left the sample that was in the AIS to demonstrate it in the contract, and didn't feel that that was appropriate. So at the 11th hour, we, and Glenn pointed out to us that whatever you see this evening, whatever decisions, if it is, you want to see the actual contract language. So we adjusted that. That's basically the only change that was made to that attachment, was the example was moved out of it.
Can't put B and C together.
Okay, walk us through.
So walking you through, and last September, City Manager Reese proposed some language. We brought that to you, that would put some structure to his compensation in his contract, which didn't exist before. And at that time also, we reviewed the rating system that was used the last two years. You gave me some language changes, so what you have in your packet, those ratings reflect the changes that you had requested. And then also, there were some calculation mistakes in the example that was there, so we updated that for you. At that time, you had wanted to withhold making a decision at that point, because we hadn't gotten through the police auditor process, which we were able to complete in November, and then you asked that we come back to you at that point in time. It's actually taken us this long to get back on your agenda. And so what we've got here this evening is virtually the same language around the compensation that you saw previously. It is the updated language, and there were some very small subtle differences on that. I've got a copy of the original, if you want me to highlight those, the verbiage that was changed in the rating system. And so what we wanted to do is present that to you this week, so that you could make some decisions around that compensation piece. And hopefully doing it sooner than later, before we move back into the evaluation feedback process and things get a little bit crazier. So that's the first thing that's on the motion and on the discussion. We brought back a little bit of information regarding the police auditor, and I guess I'd almost like to encourage you to talk about these as two separate things a little bit, so that they don't get confusing. So if there's any questions or discussions regarding the city manager proposal, any questions or comments about the city manager? Chris?
The only thing I would add, I'm really pleased with the work. I think you've done a fabulous job. And one of the things that I'm particularly grateful about separating the COLA discussion from the merit discussion, is that you can really have a true discussion about merit, when it doesn't get wrapped up with whether or not someone's keeping up with the cost of living. And I think the scale that we've created is a reasonable one, and it's a good one, that if you're successful, you've earned your salary. And that it's performance above and beyond successful, that is really where you begin to talk about the notion of increased merit. And so I think the appropriateness of the scale and the appropriateness of the recognition is, I think, exactly where, at least in my mind, I wanted to be. So I just really thank you for the hard work that you did. I'm really pleased with the outcome.
Any other comments?
We had a chance to talk about this in your office, and I also am pretty impressed with the work that came out. The question that I had, and one that I had posed to you in the office, is the review ratings are labeled "successful," "good," and "excellent," and assuming then that nothing below "successful" is acceptable. You responded in the office that while there isn't a zero, there is room in the narrative, I guess, to discuss.
Needs improvement.
Correct. And I think also, the compensation scale reflects the fact that if there's low ratings, that there wouldn't be any appropriate merit compensation.
Very well done. Thank you.
Betty?
Well, first, I'm confused. This looks to be just exactly like what we had before.
Yeah.
Look through, as much as I looked through it.
C's on the front and B's on the back.
I know that.
Right. On the Exhibit One, on the back of Attachment C, you have, it outlines, the piece that we pulled out was where it said "example," and it just didn't feel correct to have an example as part of the contract language.
Okay.
And so that's the main difference. But you need to see exactly what the contract language would look like if you're going to vote on it this evening.
You're still talking about 5%.
No, actually, the example, if you look at the one that's on Attachment B, that's a more accurate example. The other one came from the language in the fall. And so we had been requested to adjust the number of respondents and make it a more realistic example to the council. That was the miscalculation. And so in that case, the example would show you that it would be a 3.5% based on the table above. So if, I know I probably confused you, Betty, with that one on the backside of it where it said 5%, but you can erase that. It's irrelevant to what we're doing at this point in time.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how much, well, I did figure out how much 5% would be, but.
Okay, right.
So this.
It really was literally just an example to show you what the conversation might look like when you go to do the performance evaluation this summer.
If we do this, it might be plus $2,000, or these examples you have now?
That's correct.
Do I first to?
Correct, and that's on the deferred compensation. They're two separate pieces. One piece is the calculation.
This is the, I see.
Right, right.
Okay. So the current salary is $70,372, right?
$170,300.
What did I say? I say seventy.
Seventy. Wow.
Give John a little kind of a start. Less than 0% I call on.
Seventy thousand.
He loves this job. He's willing to work for half.
And I was adding 5% and got $179,000, but currently it's more than $170,000. And if we take, pass these motions, are we agreeing to a certain percentage of increase?
No, the motion is to have the structure in place in the contract. So that structure gives some guidance to your discussion around compensation. And there's still discretion at the council on what you do around that. And also, City Manager Reese, the last two years, has waived his merit because of the budget situation. His COLA went into effect six months into the fiscal, so in January. You still have discretion around making those decisions, but the language that was in the contract previously didn't even have this level of structure to talk about where he stood based on the merit rating. So that's what it's giving you.
Counselor Taylor, what I would add is, look at this more as like a formula for whatever you would plug in as this body's final ratings get determined, then you would just use this formula, wherever those ratings are would determine where on that scale the numbers would fall out. So it's very dependent on where this body goes every time there's an evaluation process. There's no guarantees.
Then the ratings would determine how much it would be.
Exactly, exactly.
There'd be no room for discussion then. Got it.
But we're not bound by that.
No, but it's, yes.
It just gives more structure than you finishing the evaluation, going, well, he did this kind of a job, and now how much do we do? It gives you a structure to be able to look at some percentages that are actually aligned with some of the other compensations we've looked, systems we've looked at.
George Brown?
Thank you. I believe we had our initial discussion about this after the review last July, and I kind of forget, I've probably asked this question, or maybe someone else did. You can remind me. When you came up with this structure, were you, did you look at other cities, or I mean, did we, did you just dream it up on your own, or did you kind of like, oh gee, I wonder what Salem is doing and Portland? Did you see what other cities were doing for guidance?
Actually, no. We did not look at what other cities. I mean, I think in the body of the work that we do in Human Resources, there are a variety of different kinds of structures that you can use, depending on which organization you're in. And I think we were really looking at what was the best fit, and from the feedback that we had, and certainly from the city manager's perspective, some guidance there as well is what we came forward with.
So we didn't do formal benchmarking? It was more pooling of brain power from experience in the field? For lack of anything else?
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I really appreciate all the hard work on this. I like, as we've had in our previous discussion, the idea of creating the metric that takes the personalities out of it, and takes the issue to a really good analysis that comes from an accurate average of where all the councilors are on this, and the numerical equivalent makes it easier to do. My only, actually, my only concern, and if I'm the one with it, I'll just, I suppose I'll live with it, but in section agreements in 1.5 here, where it says that the performance evaluation will be conducted in accordance with Exhibit One, Exhibit One essentially says that we'll use this system unless one thing is different, and that's that the budget is sufficiently ominous. So it kind of says that that's really the only reason why we could deviate from this. And I'm not suggesting that we'd want to deviate from this, I'm just suggesting that that kind of binds us a little bit, that this is the only reason under which we could make an adjustment, or that we could have some other consideration at play. So I'm wanting to kind of not tie a future council's hands in that way by suggesting that only an ominous budget situation is the only reason by which they may deviate from this formula.
Appreciate that. Glenn, did you want to say something?
Your choice is either you have something that is structured, or you have something that is not structured. You can't have something that is sort of structured unless you decide you want to deviate from it. I mean, because then you really don't have a structured process. The way this is set up is your real control over the manager's, well, the manager's adjustment in salary is because you decide he shouldn't get, his performance hasn't merited an increase. If the council on average rates the manager 1.5 or less, then he doesn't get any increase. I'm not talking about the COLAs now, but in terms of a merit increase. So the ability that you have under how this is set up is to make sure that, on average, the manager is rated at 1.5 or less. The way this is set up, if the council on average, including the mayor, rates the manager at 1.6 to 2.5, and you pass this, then the manager gets a 3.5% increase in his salary and whatever the deferred comp would be.
I don't have a problem with that at all, and I certainly wouldn't want to, my challenge with that is, if the manager has done an excellent job, I don't want to say he didn't do an excellent job if there's another consideration involved in why we, other than the budget, in why we wouldn't want to give him that manner of increase. And I, I'm not saying that I know what that is, but it kind of ties our hands in a way that I'm not comfortable with. Is there no other manner of language construction under which we might say, for example, ominous budget situation or other extenuating circumstances?
Sure, you could put that into the contract, but then essentially what you're doing is saying that we'll follow this unless we decide at that point that we don't want to follow it. And you can certainly do that. I mean, you have the legal ability to put something in a contract that says, this is the structure we will follow.
Tend to use.
Unless we decide that we don't want to follow it. And you can do that by saying, it can be four-four, with the mayor breaking the tie. You can do that by saying, you will only not follow this structure if it's a supermajority. You can put in there whatever you want, but the key is to make it as clear as possible now what would be those triggers, so that you don't, what I understand is you're trying to get away from, I think you said it, Chris, sort of the subjective, okay, well, we're doing the evaluation, and now as part of that, should we give the manager a raise or not? This was intended to get you away from that subjectivity. The only way to really do that is to be clear now what it is that would cause you to not follow this structure. Right now, you have built into this draft, we won't follow it if the council decides, and it's completely up to you, that it's an ominous budget situation. If there's something other than the budget that you would say, well, that would cause us to want to deviate from this, if you can talk about that and give us an idea as to what that is, we can draft language around it. If you simply want it to be whatever the council in the future decides, you know, for whatever reason, we just don't really want to give the manager that much of a raise or a raise, we can build that language in, but then you really don't have structure here. You've simply got.
I agree, but I hear you.
But that's the question, is how clear do you want to be today? Our understanding was, when you talked about this before, is you wanted to be subjective related to the evaluation, but having then done the evaluation, you wanted the merit increase to be virtually automatic unless you decided the budget really was bad, and so we just can't afford it.
Thanks, Glenn.
So I have an A Q. Pat, George, Betty, and Alan.
Just briefly, Mayor, looking at the weighted average range and the percent increase, anything lower than 1.5 equals a 0% increase. So I'm comfortable that that gives the council as much latitude as we need to give no raise if performances, if warrants that. And that's also reflected in the deferred compensation, a similar scale. So I feel comfortable that that gives us the latitude to make whatever adjustment is deemed necessary by the manager's performance. So, okay, thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
George Polling?
Well, I think there's enough subjectivity in the process that, you know, in the evaluation part. And I think that a city manager needs to know that if he's doing a good job, or, you know, he can expect to get a merit increase if he does a job that he's supposed to do or better. And I think adding anything other than ominous budget predictions in there, you know, in the past, there've been councilors on this council that can manifest all kinds of horrible things that would keep a person, even though they did an excellent job, from getting a pay raise or a merit increase, I should say. And I think we need to be consistent and give a city manager, whether it's John or somebody else years on down the road, since he's going to retire out of the city of Eugene, the expectation that I'm here to do a good job, and I deserve a merit increase, and I need to, you know, work on these points. So I think the way it's set up is pretty good, and I'm real pleased with it.
Betty?
Well, what's ominous, that can be subjective, too. I don't see how you got away from being subjective. And I also think someone might say, well, this is enough money for doing an excellent job. That could be another reason. For Eugene, it's a pretty big salary, I think. But with New York City, it'd be different. So I think there might be other reasons, and I don't like making it into a formula.
Okay, Alan?
I was going to say what Pat and George said, but in response to what you said, the market isn't Eugene, the market is all the other cities where that could come and pick off Mr. Reese if he's doing an excellent job. So the market is larger in scope than just the city of Eugene. And that's what we have to have in the back of our head as well.
Chris?
Thanks. I think when it comes to compensation, you want as much consistency and uniformity as you can. There is still a mechanism for being subjective, and that is the actual performance rating. I mean, if you think someone's not performing, then you give them a poor rating, and then the rest of it will play out the way it should. I don't think this prevents us from, if we absolutely positively needed to make some sort of a departure from what's here, possible, but I think you'd want to really make it very difficult to do. You could do it, but you'd have to work to do it, and I think that's the safeguard you want in place. I think you want to have a system that's structured, that's understandable, and is reliable, and it's in place. And then if you have an extraordinary circumstance, you could work to try to change it, but that's not the normal circumstance. I think the subjectivity is in how you rate the performance of the city manager. If you think he's only doing a successful job, I say only successful, I mean, successful is successful. If you think he's doing a successful job, which doesn't warrant some sort of a merit increase, then rate him that way. I mean, that's where you can have your impact on what it is. Now, the other question would be, oh, I think he's doing such an incredibly wonderful job, he or she, whoever the future might hold, that we ought to give him an 8% raise. I would be nervous about starting to go off the clock that way, because I don't think that's where the system retains its fairness and its reliability. Now you're starting to get kind of into a popularity contest, which is what we're trying to avoid. So making it hard, it's not impossible to do, but you just want to make it real hard to do. The last thing I want to mention quickly is, on Attachment B, when you're looking at the weighted average range in the little box, I'm putting on my market research hat, you have 1 to 1.5, and then have 1 to 1.5 and then 1.6 to 2.5, and then 2.5 to 3. It should be 2.6 to 3.
Got it reversed.
Can I have 2.6?
Okay. Got it reversed.
On here, it says 2.5. On Attachment B, it said 2.6. I think you want to stay with 2.6. That way you go, well, if he gets a 2.5, does that mean he's in the 3.5 range or is he in the 5 range? So it's a simple change. Just change the 5 to a 6 and then it's.
It's actually changed on Attachment B. That was part of the, that came out of the contract.
Right, but on this piece of paper, it still says 2.5.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So that's cool. That's all I was, that's that.
Thank you.
Yep. Otherwise, yeah, I appreciate it.
Andrea?
Well, this is a really good conversation. You know, we're talking about a moment in time and a snapshot of John's time, the day that we evaluate him. But really, we have the opportunity to evaluate him every day that he works, and I would hope that none of this would be for John a surprise. And, you know, I would hope that, you know, he does stay here a long time. I'm pretty pleased with his work. But I just, you know, I just feel like, you know, we're in constant communication with him, and we can evaluate him on a weekly, daily, monthly basis. And if there's something that we're unhappy with or that we feel he's heading down the wrong road, that's our opportunity so that it isn't a surprise or that we don't look like we're trying to undermine his successes, you know, when we are at the table. I would hope that people, you know, check in with him and let him know what they're happy or unhappy about.
So Betty's going to put the motion on the table.
Okay. Anybody object to dividing it into two? I just.
Which portion do you mean?
A and B.
Separate?
Anyway, I'll try that. Then I'll do two after we run this. I move to approve the ratings definition to Attachment A, the compensation amendment to the city manager's contract to Attachment B. Well, I guess it all goes together. I'll go ahead. And direct the council president to sign the amendment to the city manager's contract attached as Attachment C.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please?
Well, I want to make one comment first, I'll vote, but I do think that we're paying enough to expect excellent work, and excellent work shouldn't automatically mean a certain amount of a raise, more than cost of living. But that's my final comment.
All right. With that, all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Now you want to have a discussion about the police auditor?
Yes. We didn't include attachments, feeling like it was a separate discussion, and so I'm looking for some guidance from the council if you want to revisit this. One of the things that we had heard was the potential of paralleling the processes. So one option is to have the same ratings language in the police auditor's process and to parallel that. The other question that came up was around whether the compensation, there might be some parallels there. And a piece of information we looked up that we didn't have at the time that the council talked in September, or wasn't off the top of my head, was that there's already a compensation structure in the contract for the police auditor. It's a six-step compensation structure. And one of the questions was, it seemed like one of the things that was driving the discussion for the city manager was the fact that there wasn't really a structure in his contract. And so before we go down that path for the police auditor, I just wanted to point out that there's already a structure in place for the police auditor's contract. And if that's something that you want to be looking at again, then we'd want to come back with the appropriate information at that time, so.
Pat?
I think in a discussion that we had and in looking at it, the police auditor's job perhaps is more similar to a department director's job, and the city manager's job is significantly different. So to me, keeping the six-step approach to the police auditor seems a little bit more logical to keep it more in line with the department manager rather than with the city manager.
Anybody else have a comment they want to make? Yes.
For clarity's sake, so it's a six-step increase of what's the range?
The steps start at $86,715. It's approximately a 4.5 incremental stepping out. Step 6 at $108,056. So that's the progressiveness of that structure. And that parallels for what we call our nonrepresented employees, all the way through our executive directors or the department executive directors.
Right.
The step system.
I agree with what Pat said.
So I just want to clarify this, and looking at you all, maybe you'll say it, Chris, that what, the, want to use the same rating definitions. I don't think you've been, you haven't explicitly said that yet, so.
Yeah, no, I think, I'm hearing that. But the question I would have is, if you go with the regular six-step range that executive managers get, then you're on a system where you can top out.
Yes.
Six-step range you can top out at.
Like a department.
Like any other department manager. I mean, I'm just making sure everybody's clear on that. It's not that I'm saying that's not okay, but it's just, I was in a job once for 20 years where I topped out after the first eight, and then after that, it's like, okay. So until you do a salary survey, which.
So unless I hear something different, I'm hearing you use the same definitions but use the six steps. Is that what, everybody's got that? Okay, that's what I.
So, Chris, they should have waited till year 15 then, right?
Yeah, right.
Is there anything else you need from?
That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
With that, I'm going to close the meeting. Thank you all.
Great. Good work.
Repair job.
Time to go.